Chairperson, can we please start the meeting?
Certainly. Welcome to the April 1st Planning Commission meeting. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Roberts is absent. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments, we're going to move into public comments. For the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated, or if approved by the chair. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Zoom participation during the general public comment period will not be accepted. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days.
At this time, we have 10 speaker cards for in-person public comment. Our first speaker is Danny Dorman.
Last week, I did this. I sat for, I don't know, a minute in silence to get the attention of, not the council, and tonight, not even you folks. And I was just gonna do my usual complaining and calling out of CCC Fire Diane Burgess. But I happened to be scrolling through my Facebook, and the county put out a little 35-second snippet. I'm not looking at it now, but the heading was something along the lines of, "Brand-new Firehouse Coming to Brentwood, October 2026." And they showed the proposed area that you'll hear a lot about tonight, okay? "Misleading is All Get Out," and I'm gonna look right at the camera at you, you backroom, backstabbing, deal-making, campaign-motivated boneheads. Especially our, see, I can't even use the adjective of esteem, because I have plenty other adjectives that I would take, put in its place, but supervisor Diane Burgess. That little snippet of propaganda was amazing. Now, they were correct in stating that we will have a new Brentwood firehouse here in October 2026. So the statement is accurate, but the video where it shows how a fire truck will be able to come out of the alleyway nice and smooth and simple, and showing basically everything that was brought to your attention last session, it's, they put a little video together to basically make it seem like you guys didn't do your job correctly. And honestly, it also smacks of, well, we're gonna do this whether you like it or not. Now, I know that there are some people and some entities, some organizations, that get heat for my comments. Some would actually say they put me up to it, and boy, you don't know me if you think that somebody is putting me up to this. No one's putting me up to this. So you can throw the barbs and the whole, see, we're vets. And, you know, we are of the belief that sticks and stones may break our bones. And the thing is, with a vet, sticks and stones may break our bones, but we're still gonna come at you. That's just what's ingrained in us. My thing has been the last few rants about the location and the viability of the location. It doesn't make sense to squeeze a firehouse downtown. I don't care if it's the Veterans Hall, I don't care of any piece of land that's available. It doesn't make sense. We have 355 Sand Creek. It was designed for this. Then, all of a sudden, political aspirations, backroom deals, all of that stuff. That silly stuff. And using words like pitting firefighters against vets and things like that. That is ridiculous. I'm glad you guys stood your ground. Thank you.
Next, we have Darren Clark.
PD, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff. My name's Darren Clark. I'm a representative of Northern California Carpenters Union. I'm currently working out of Local 152 in Martinez, which covers Contra Costa County. I've been a carpenter for 34 years. In those years, I've learned that being a carpenter is about more than just building structures. It's about building future, a standard of excellence, and a commitment to those who come after us. The first core value I stand by is craftsmanship. Every project I've worked on, whether it was drywall, metal stud framing, lathing, concrete, has been a reflection of my dedication to quality. A true carpenter takes pride in their work, knowing that what we build today will stand for generations. Another value I hold is integrity. Our word and our work go hand in hand. If we don't stand up for fair wages, safe working conditions, and proper training, then we allow the industry to be driven by the lowest bidder rather than the highest standard. That's why I've always been committed to unions, because they ensure that we aren't just workers, but skilled professionals who are treated with respect. Finally, membership, mentorship is key. After 34 years in the trade, I know it's my responsibility to pass on what I've learned. The next generation of carpenters will carry this industry forward, and it's up to us to make sure they are prepared. Not just with tools in their hands, but with the knowledge of what it means to be a union carpenter. The carpenters have the most modern apprentice training facilities in the country, and they have the resources to turn that apprentice into a skilled journey person. Not only in the facilities in California, but we can send them out to our facilities in Las Vegas. When an apprentice finishes the program, he or she will be able to build or work anywhere in the state, even in the country for that matter. And this will also provide them with the knowledge and the skill to earn a living wage, raise a family in today's world, as well as giving them future with healthcare, a dental plan, a pension, an annuity, and a 401K plan. I spent my career standing up for fair wages, benefits, and opportunities for my fellow workers. That's what a carpenter means to me. Not just building structures, but building a better future for all of us. Thank you.
Dolores Long.
Good evening, Brentwood Planning Commissioners and Staff. Thank you once again for your thoughtful and measured review of Fire Station 94 project. Your recent deliberations brought to light serious gaps in the city's permitting process, especially regarding the inappropriate applications of the SEQA infill exemption. As one of the Commissioners rightly pointed out, it is clear that the infill exemption was misapplied in this case. The scale, scope, and potential impacts of the proposed fire station, ranging from traffic and noise to pedestrian safety and historical land use, warrants a full environmental review. This is exactly what SEQA is designed for, to ensure that all environmental and community impacts are properly assessed before irreversible decisions are made. Unfortunately, the current city processes might appear to lack safeguards that would prevent an exemption from being improperly granted or going unchallenged. It also seems to allow for county projects to receive expedited consideration without the same level of scrutiny expected of private and local applicants. Brentwood definitely deserves better. All residents deserve to know that their city leaders are applying the same level of diligence to every project, no matter who submits it. The city's process should not allow the county or any other entity to take procedural shortcuts that bypass public accountability and critical review. We urge the Planning Commissioners and the city leadership to reevaluate the eternal process that led to this oversight. New measures should be implemented to ensure that environment and community impacts are thoroughly reviewed and that the SEQA exemptions are applied with clear and justified reasoning if needed. Thank you again for your service and your continued commitment to ensuring transparency, accountability, and thoughtful stewardship of the Brentwood future. Remember, yes to the station, no to the location. Thank you.
Travis Martin.
It's gonna be rough to follow that. She was on point all the way down the line. Whoa, my other eye. Good evening. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our last meeting, you sat through what could only be described as a diatribe with tomes of information delivered, ingested, and then deliberated on. Our thanks are for your patience, our thanks are for your deliberations, and our thanks are for the homework that you performed in addition to everything that we have tried to bring to light regarding this firehouse's location, its design, and its impact to our community. I'd like to take a brief step back, my adulation, to make a note of disappointment. When we had heard regarding Commissioner Johnson's donations from the fire union, I understand there is innumerable legal and ethical ways to be able to receive your support, your candidate, your contributions. Of that, I am not in contradiction or concern. What I really looked for when I heard this was, in my mind, in our previous conversations, official and in passing, as to whether or not we had been informed. Because to us, we have, at every turn, made this an absolute open book quiz for everybody. We have held nothing back. We email on the regular everything we're coming with. So when we have something like that, that is laid at our feet inexplicably, particularly in front of the entire house, it was, it was, we were taken aback by it. And I say "we" speaking on my behalf and with every person that I had a conversation with after that. Ethics is one thing, whether or not it meets the law. Character and morality are another. And little things like that break trust. And trust is everything for people who are operating in common goals, and common goals and common good. So, moving past that, there were several items identified in the review process that were not addressed in the resolution that evening. I hope that those items are not laid to rest, forgotten, or otherwise not brought to the floor when the appropriate time occurs in order to address them, because they are important, relevant, and impactful to the way the decision that this body holds will play out within our community. Again, some decisions can become irrevocably damaging to a community when you've made a decision that you can't, when you flip a switch, you can't unflip. There is an alternate site, we're aware of it, at 355 Sand Creek. If there is anything within the purview, and I look to the empty side of the house here where our city officials, oh, I'm sorry, y'all are hiding over here. If there's anything to that site, because we know of its providence, we understand what it was designed for, and we know that it's ready, it's move-in ready. U-Haul boxes at the curb, let's plug this thing in, plum it up. What can the city do to make that an obvious option to the first street location that we are being hard-pressed to? A lot of that comes from whether or not the city can work with the fire district to make that happen. And lastly, we are always available to review any information that you find about this. We are always open to providing you everything we have, as we have been the entire process. Any issues surrounding this firehouse or the veterans' community that comes across your dais, we are always available to present, to work hand in hand, and to deliver our honest opinion on how that impacts us and our community. So, thank you very much for all of your effort and time in these weeks leading up to it, and we'll see you back here in a few weeks when we have.
The speaker's time has expired. Mike Mijakovic.
Evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Mike Mijakovic. I'm the Junior Vice Commander at BFW Post 10789. Thank you for your thoughtful and diligent consideration on the Fire Station 94 design permit. Your questions during the recent meeting were insightful and revealed a number of significant concerns that might have otherwise gone unexamined. Most notably, your inquiry helped expose a reoccurring issue with the city's review process, a failure to adequately investigate and consider land use restrictions early and during the permitting process. Unfortunately, this is not the first time such an oversight has occurred. In 2009, the City Council approved construction of a civic center on land originally designed as a public park. That decision sparked considerable public outcry, including recall attempts based on beliefs that the intended use was being violated. And now, we are facing another instance involving land use restrictions. This time, the veterans' property, which was purchased in 1923 using a special tax fund and legally dedicated to veterans' memorials and meeting purposes. The current permitting and review process appears to lack a reliable mechanism for identifying and addressing these kind of property-specific limitations. These are not minor administrative details. They are foundational, legal, and ethical obligations tied to the original purpose of the land. We respectfully recommend the city conduct a comprehensive review of its permitting and land use procedures. New checks should be put in place to ensure the property with historical and legal restrictions is properly vetted before major projects move forward. Projects should not be allowed to advance so far into the approval process only to uncover serious compliance issues at the 11th hour. And again, thank you for your tenacity and dedication to protecting the public's interests and your trust. Your work is essential in keeping Brentwood a city that respects both its history and its future. Thank you for listening and doing the right thing. Remember, no to the station, or no to the location, yes to the station. Thank you.
Paul Ratliff.
Commissioners, staff, thank you for your time. At the last meeting, there appeared to be a misunderstanding regarding the proposed fire station's impact on Diablo Way. While it's true that fire trucks are exempt from weight limits for emergency response purposes, this exemption has been misapplied in this discussion. Let's be clear, the exemption allows fire trucks to respond where needed during emergencies. It does not mean that those vehicles are exempt from the laws of physics or the wear and tear they can cause on the infrastructure. We actually know this, because in the past, the fire truck went through Diablo Way and broke a water line. There are several types of fire trucks that are scheduled to be in there. Okay, and to preface that, Diablo Way was recently repaired and constructed to a Level 5 standard. Caltrans Level 5 standard for a street is to a maximum of 19,000 pounds. The Type 1 fire engine that they're discussing putting there when loaded with water equipment and men is in excess of 42,000 pounds. The Type 2, which we've heard, is in excess of 26, and a Type 3 is also in excess of 26,000 pounds, well beyond the rated capacity of that street. Occasional deliveries or weekly trash pickups are not the same as a heavy fire trucks using Diablo Way multiple times a day, every single day. The frequency and weight of this usage will degrade the roads quickly, and we must ask, who will pay for that increased maintenance and inevitable repairs? Why should the residents of Brentwood bear the cost for that county project? And as I recall from years ago, when that fire truck went through, it wasn't the fire department that paid to repair that street, nor was it the county that came down on the city of Brentwood. This isn't simply about whether fire trucks are allowed to use the road, it's about whether the road was designed for this level of use and what the consequences will follow. Because according to a friend of mine and somebody I know that works for Caltrans, the appropriate level of street should be Level 8 for the fire trucks that are gonna be there, which is in excess of 60,000 pounds. This is another example of the permitting process failing to evaluate the long-term impact on local infrastructure. This issue is not about exemptions, it's about responsible planning, engineering, and cost accountability. We urge the Commission to look closely at the physical realities of placing a fire station here and not simply deferring to exemptions that were never intended for this kind of daily impact. Again, yes to the station, no to the location, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Charles Martinez.
Charles Martinez.
Good evening, commissioners, city staff. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of Streets of Brentwood and the plans that will be presented this evening. I serve as the senior general manager.
Sir.
Yes.
If you want to talk about the Streets of Brentwood, we're having that next.
Oh, okay.
And that would be the time to come up.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Shannon Skinner. How about, I can't read the writing, but Hedy Vavka? Okay. At this time, we have no more speaker cards.
Our next item is the consent calendar. There is one set of minutes for the regular meeting of March 18, 2025. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Our first business item, E1, is a design review amendment for three new buildings in the Central Plaza area and master sign program amendment for new monument signs at the Streets of Brentwood. Adopt resolution number 25-009 approving an amendment to design review number 07-002 and design review number 07-015 for three new buildings in the Central Plaza area and an amendment to the master sign program for new monument signs at the Streets of Brentwood. For the staff report, Eric.
Thank you, chairperson, floor members of the commission. I do have a brief presentation for this item. Just by way of background, the Streets of Brentwood has a fairly lengthy history dating back all the way to 2006. And that's when the original site plan, some of the architecture, and the SEQA document in the form of a mitigated negative declaration were all approved by the planning commission. The totality of the site encompasses just about 54 acres, and it includes an approval for up to 460,000 square feet of building area. Now, since that original approval in 2006, the commission has approved a number of subsequent revisions and separate entitlements specifically for some of the outlot buildings. The property is designated regional commercial by the general plan, and it's within the PD6 zoning district. To date, and you can see this hopefully fairly well up on the screen, there's about 42 of the 54 acres that have been developed. And most recently, the commission last year considered separate applications and approved a dual-branded La Quinta Hawthorne Suites Hotel off of Shady Willa Lane, and then also a Dutch Bros Coffee drive-thru off of Sand Creek Road next to Black Angus. So CenterCal Properties is a commercial developer that's based in Southern California, and they have a total of 17 different properties that they own and manage across the Western United States. Last summer, CenterCal purchased seven of the 10 parcels within the Streets of Brentwood, and that includes the largest 28-acre piece where the theater is located. They also own Red Robin, Black Angus, and some of the other parcels as well. So after the purchase was complete, CenterCal got in contact with staff and started talking about a plan to make a series of coordinated improvements. And those improvements are focused initially in the area near the theater. The improvements include revisions to landscape and hardscape features near the theater and within that Central Plaza area, as well as closing off the one-way vehicular circulation aisle in front of the theater. Staff did approve these improvements administratively back in early February based on substantial conformance to the originally approved plans. Additional improvements include three new buildings near the theater and then monument signs at specific locations. And you can see the proposed buildings on the site plan on the screen in the dark gray colors. Each of the buildings, and I'm just going to click through renderings of them now. Each of the buildings are single-story. The largest of the three is identified as B8 on the plans. It's directly north of the entrance to the theater. It's about 5,700 square feet in size. Also includes a large 1,300-square-foot covered patio at the south end. And then there are two, what CenterCal is calling pavilion buildings. The first building is identified as PV10 and PV20. This one will be closest to the theater, and it's approximately 850 square feet in size. It has a large patio cover that extends around the both, or all, east, south, and west sides. That's about 1,700 square feet in size, which is larger than the building itself. And then the last building, identified on the plans as PV40, which is further to the east, but still within that Central Plaza area. That measures approximately 1,600 square feet and also houses an approximate 600-square-foot covered patio at the west end of the building. Each of these have been designed, stated intent with all these improvements is to provide enhanced and additional amenities for customers while also diversifying the type and number of food uses that are available. The second part of this request involves both a relocation and an increase in the amount of monument signs, primarily to provide enhanced entry identification along Sand Creek, Sand Creek Road, excuse me, as well as wayfinding interior to the center. What I'm displaying on the screen right now is the applicant's proposal for new monumentation at the Sand Creek Road entrance. Currently, there's a single sign kind of in front of Black Angus. It's a fairly low profile. So the proposal would be to increase the height of that one existing sign from six feet to approximately 20 feet, and then mirror that on the opposite side of the entrance in front of BJ's. The other part of this would be to add some wayfinding monument signs that are interior to the site. These would be approximately six feet in height and three feet in width, and they'd be, they'd be placed strategically to, strategically for pedestrians and drivers. So this necessitates an amendment to the master sign program for the Streets of Brentwood. And you'll notice on the staff report packet, attachment one lists all the prior actions that have taken place on this item, or for the Streets of Brentwood. The master sign program was originally approved in 2008. That's one of the items that's been amended a number of times over the years. I think it's six in total, most recently in 2015. So this would be the, the next iteration of the master sign program. Lastly, I just wanted to note that the request is consistent with the general plan, the zoning for the site, as well as the design guidelines. That's all detailed in the staff report. Finally, there is no additional SEQA review necessary since the proposed buildings and the signs all fall within the scope of that original approval back in 2006. So lastly, I would just say that staff recommends approval of both the designer view amendment and the master sign program amendment. There are certain conditions of approval that are recommended, and those are included in the draft resolution. I know the applicant and some of the team members from CenterCal are here. They have a brief presentation they'd like to make as well when the commission opens public comment. But for that, I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Does the planning commission have any clarifying questions for staff? Okay. At this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant. He will have 10 minutes. The applicant can go first. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Well, good evening. Oh, we got a nice sound on that. Good evening, chair, vice chair, commissioners, and staff. My name is Scott Boer. I'm the vice president of development for CenterCal Properties. And myself, along with my colleagues here, I'm just one of 150 passionate placemakers at CenterCal Properties. We specialize in creating vibrant, retail-driven, mixed-use environments. And when we succeed, we believe that these properties become the heart of the communities that they serve. In addition to that, we recently became, along with our capital partners at Hytman, the proud owners of the Streets of Brentwood here in Brentwood, California. I've shared with staff quite a bit that we've, our company has watched Brentwood from afar for some time, including the Streets of Brentwood asset. It's been incredible to see the growth of the community and more importantly, the leadership that's been facilitating that growth. And that was further reinforced at the state of the city address last night, which a few of my colleagues were present at, and I was lucky enough to see a presentation from today. When I spoke in front of this commission last fall on behalf of Dutch Bros Coffee, I shared a bit of the vision that we have for the reimagining of the Streets of Brentwood, which really focused on, one, creating an incredible world-class public space that serves the community of Brentwood as a destination that they can call their own. Secondly, to activate that space with vibrant food and beverage operators that meet the demands of a growing community for a more elevated dining experience. And third, to bring in a contemporary merchandising mix to backfill the rest of the space at the shopping center with retailers, services, as well as traffic-driving operators along Sand Creek Road, similar to Dutch Bros. Well, since that time, we've been hard at work, clarifying that vision and creating a plan to execute on enhancing the Streets of Brentwood. Most recently, we welcomed Barnes &amp; Noble to the, as mentioned by staff, 14-year vacant former REI space. Later this month, we're excited to have Dutch Bros break ground on vertical construction for their building. And tonight, myself and the team are very excited to be in front of you to share an update on that vision and for formal design review of not one, not two, but three new construction buildings on-site that will help to support creating a more vibrant experience at the Streets of Brentwood. And most importantly, will activate the interior of the property, which has yet to realize its full potential. Eric, if you could pop to the next slide. And to the next one. A few of you may be familiar with some of our assets here in the Bay Area. We redeveloped Bay Street and rebuilt most recently. And we are the regional developers and still owners of the Veranda in Concord. We do typically own our properties and operate them long-term along with the incredible staff and team we have behind me tonight. Eric already did an exceptional job of walking you through the history of the project and the details of our submittal. So I'm going to stay focused on the high-level vision for our redevelopment efforts and share some recent imagery we created just for this group tonight to really make sure we're communicating the vision that we believe we can co-create with the community at the Streets of Brentwood. Let's hop to the next screen. So to orient you, we're looking at an overall site plan here. And this shows you the location of the few of the buildings that we are looking at redeveloping, which were included in the original plan, one of which is north and mirrors the former Mel's Diner building on the south side in front of AMC. That building was actually originally constructed and then torn down during the Great Financial Crisis. We think that reconstructing that building to create an immersive environment is a key part of our success, as well as the construction of the pavilions along the main promenade. Let's dive in closer on the next slide. Here you can see the focus on creating an immersive experience really come to life by the orientation of the new buildings that create this immersive experience with a new lawn area, with the pavilions, as we're calling PV10 and 20, with a large-format canopy to create that indoor-outdoor space to engage pedestrians. An olive grove to the east of that, a lawn area that serves the building bookending the rest of the plaza on the far east side, looking back. Let's hop to the next one. Here is a bird's-eye view of the new plaza. So on the right-hand side, you see building B8, one of the new proposed buildings with the large outdoor patio area, both covered and uncovered. Center in front of AMC's entrance is a large passive area that we're calling the lawn that will also be available for use for larger-format events, which is something currently lacking in the Streets of Brentwood. Across the way, you see a redeveloped version of building currently B4 with a large outdoor patio area for a future food and beverage operator. Similarly, behind it in the former, a portion of the former Mel's space, we have plans for another more casual food operator. To the west, or to the east of that, you see the western edge of Pavilion 1020, showing some of that indoor-outdoor space that we think will really bring this property to life and differentiate it not just within the Brentwood community, but in the Bay Area at large. Let's hop to the next screen. And so now we're dropping into the plaza. We're getting that feeling of what it's like to actually be at this future Streets of Brentwood. So we're at the AMC entrance looking east. And here you can really start to get the feel for what the vibe is here. This is a space that is built for the community with outdoor dining options, with space for people to be enjoying the Streets of Brentwood shade. We have heard it's a top priority from community members across the board. That is something that we want to incorporate into every portion of this plaza redevelopment to really make sure people can enjoy this on the hottest days, as well as canopy for all-weather dining year-round. Let's hop to the next screen. So here we are looking at the central part of the promenade. This again is that PB1020 building. Here you can really see some of the details come to life. An outdoor fire pit underneath the left side of the canopy on the western side, a water feature on the eastern portion, really having that walk-up dining service engaging the, not just the pedestrian, but people driving into the property. To the east, you can see that passive outdoor space, which will feature outdoor games, lounge seating, shade again through, through some olive trees. And then to the far east, you see that final pavilion building with the lawn area in front of it, really creating spaces that families can enjoy their time. Teenagers can come hang out. All things that we currently here are really missing as a part of the community as you guys have continued to grow. With that, that is the extent of my presentation, and we humbly ask for your swift approval on the design review in front of you so that we can get our head back down and focus on executing on this vision. I do have Joseph Bros with RMW here tonight, our architect. If you have any technical questions, I'll be here as well. I also want to throw out a request to have Ricardo Noguero come up and be able to share a little bit about the partnership between CenterCal and the city of Brentwood to date. Thank you so much for your time.
Does the planning commission have any questions of the applicant? Okay. So at this time, we'll do public speakers.
Hedy Vaviska? Sorry.
Hello, good evening. My name is Hedy Vavka, and I am part of the leasing team for the Streets of Brentwood. I'm a big fan. I have been coming to Brentwood since the days of Odyssey of the Mind with my kids. And we ate at several of the restaurants. We came straight to Streets of Brentwood then and continue to come out here for various events. I'm excited about the new sports facility and all the great, wonderful things that are happening. This community is so deserving of their own place as opposed to visiting the veranda as often as they do. The vision that we have are really the, I always call it the four food groups, but really, this is the way that I see the communities utilizing their facilities. You've got the fun, the food, the fitness, the fashion. And that's what we intend to bring here. And extending the stay beyond hosting at your living room and having to clean your kitchen. This will be your living room. And in addition to that, you know, the events that CenterCal is famous for, not only do they have a few events, they have over 100 events annually. So the merchandising vision is to bring the best-in-class in casual, polished dining so the family can come, you know, from, you know, the youngster to the grandma. And also takeout food. That is one proponent that I think is really lacking in Brentwood. It is yesterday's news to some degree of where the food industry has gone. So bringing a lot of those polished, casual dining concepts that have not wanted to land in Brentwood because there has not been a cohesive project for them to land, yet they were scattered. So we're hoping to do that. The fashion, they came, they left. We're bringing them back as the community's grown. We know that there's a lot of fashionable people out here going elsewhere. So working on diversifying it from just teenage concepts to something for the entire family. Lastly, the fitness, the microfitness trend is, and health and wellness is first and foremost in everyone's mind. There's so many great new concepts that are out there. A lot of them are franchised, probably franchisees that are living in this community, such as we already have Orange Theory, but then there's so many others, the bar franchises, the cycling franchises, bringing that to fruition. And the fun, more entertainment, more reasons to stay here. You know, the billiards is obviously very popular and in the community already, but there's, there's cornhole, as we know. But then there's shuffleboard, and there's so many other new concepts out there. So we're super excited. The real estate community is really curious and very excited. We've had a number of folks out here, and we are just eager to announce some new tenants. We're getting close. So anyway, I love this project. I love working for CenterCal. I am a consultant. I am not in-house. Nobody's paid me to say this. So anyway, thank you for your consideration. That's it for me.
Shannon Skinner.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. As a previous 29-year resident of Far East County and a parent whose child went to school at the high school here, I feel very deeply connected to this area's growth in the future. I'm proud to stand before you today, not only as someone who has watched this community grow, but also as a member of CenterCal Properties, an organization committed to creating thoughtful and vibrant spaces that serve the needs of the community. I'm especially excited here as the Assistant General Manager for the Streets of Brentwood. This development represents more than just a few new buildings. It reflects a vision for the community's future, one that brings together commerce, culture, engagement in a way that honors the community while looking forward. Thank you for your time and your consideration for this project.
Dana Moldavon.
Good evening. My name is Dana Moldavon, and I'm the Marketing Coordinator for the Veranda and the Streets of Brentwood. And I'm here in support of CenterCal Properties' plans for the Streets of Brentwood. As a Concord resident, I've seen the incredible positive impact that the Veranda has had on Concord economically and for the community. And I just look forward to being a part of CenterCal's vision and bringing that positivity economically and for the community to Brentwood. So thank you for your consideration.
Melissa Van Bruten.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I am just here to say that I would love to see this amendment supported. In the 10 years that I have been a Brentwood resident, I have obviously been to the streets multiple times and seen so many businesses come and go. And sometimes it's really busy, and sometimes it's a ghost town. And you know, after COVID, it, it was kind of sad for a while. I really miss Mel's, I'm not going to lie. But it would be really great to have these new buildings as reflected in the original 2006 plans. Looking over the designs that were part of the packet, they look really lovely and will do nothing but elevate Streets of Brentwood. And totally personally, real quick, to be honest, the mocktails that I saw on one of those buildings really caught my attention. As somebody who doesn't drink, I would love to see something go in there that did provide mocktails, and maybe that was their specialty. But I definitely think it would be a great addition to a wonderful shopping area. I know what they've done with the Veranda. I go to the Veranda often, usually around Christmas time, and I cannot wait to bring that same elevated level of shopping and consumer experience to Brentwood, increase our tax revenue, and just all-around good things. Thank you.
Olga Vidriales.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I am so excited right now. I don't think I can even, I can't even control myself. I don't shop or drink, but that's a lie. So good evening. My name, my name is Olga Vidriales, and I am a proud resident of Brentwood. I moved to Brentwood in 2003 from Hayward and never ever looked back. And I've lived in Shadow Lakes all that time as well. So I've seen firsthand the Streets of Brentwood, and it's declined, honestly, it really declined in the last decade. And then comes along CenterCal. Oh my gosh, thank you, Lord. Thank you, thank you, thank you for even wanting to take over such a, I don't know, a failing venture like the Streets of Brentwood, but don't let them know that. So again, thank you. I travel bimonthly, maybe more often, to the Veranda Shopping Center in Concord. I have a lot of friends, fellow shoppers who do the same. It is a spectacular shopping center, and if you have not been there, then you need to go. Before, if you are even thinking about deciding negatively on these improvements, you need to go to Veranda and see what they can bring to Concord. They have wonderful restaurants and shopping opportunities, very family-oriented. I am delighted that I can now, I'll be able to spend my tax dollar in my own city to get my shop on and that I no longer have to drive 30 to 40 minutes once or twice a month to find some great restaurants or do some great shopping there. Obviously, I fully support CenterCal's proposed improvements. Their plan will bring new energy, vibrant stores, and great dining options, making Brentwood an even better place to live, shop, and dine and call home. This isn't just about business, of course, it's a tax base, and that's always important, but this is personal. This is about improving our quality of life in Brentwood. It's about enhancing, excuse me, property values in Shadow Lakes and surrounding neighborhoods. Yes, 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 we want vibrant, we want polished dining options, we want the outdoor facilities. So please, let's all work together to keep, keep it better in Brentwood. And I do hope that you find their proposed improvements favorable. Thank you so much.
At this time, we have no other speakers here in person. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
April, before we do that, Charles Martinez, did you want to, did you want to speak?
I'm sorry, did I skip you? That's what, that's what it was, you're right. I moved your card to the wrong pile. Go ahead, Charles.
Thank you very much. Good evening, commissioners, again. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity and staff. As a Senior General Manager for, with CenterCal and Streets of Brentwood, I'm just super excited about this opportunity. I've worked on a number of redevelopment projects, and it's always a thrill to just see the change, the change in people when they're at the property, the change in the performance of the stores, just the overall improvements to, to the quality of life, to, to the, to the environment and to the general experience. Something we haven't touched on as well as the job creation, job readiness. One thing that I enjoy doing as much as creating spaces is working with the community. And thus far, everybody has been so receptive to that and super supportive from law enforcement to community stakeholders. And I'm just really looking forward to this opportunity, and I thank you for your consideration. And have a nice evening. Thank you.
One more check. I do not at this time. You don't want to? I do not have any speakers in Zoom.
Oh, you don't?
I do not.
Well, good evening. Can you hear me? Ricardo Noguera, Economic Development Manager. You don't often see me in the audience, but when you see me in the audience, you know I've been working behind the scenes trying to bring progress to Brentwood. So, so this evening, I just want to share a few thoughts with you on the Streets of Brentwood. For the past three-plus years since I arrived here in January 2022, I've been working on uplifting that center. Was working with the folks at Fairborn, the former owners, for almost three years out in Chicago. We were working to attract tenants such as the American Family Medical Group, Axes and Ales, Mathnasium, Dutch Brothers. We worked with them to sell the land to La Quinta Hotel and to Sutter Health. So Sutter Health will be coming here, hopefully sometime this year, with 100,000-square-foot medical office building on that seven-acre site. Last spring, I was at a retailers conference in Monterey, and a broker that I work with closely in the city said, hey, I have a developer who's been talking to Fairborn and is looking at that property, the Streets of Brentwood. He took me by, we sat down with Scott, and, and I was aware of CenterCal long before they came into the picture. I knew their work at the Veranda, I knew their work in Emeryville, I also knew their work in Long Beach and in the Pacific Northwest. So I'm very familiar with the, this developer, and I was very excited, especially when it comes to retail. We sat down, we talked. They shared their background, they shared their vision of what they would do with the Streets of Brentwood if they were selected. And they had to go through a vetting process with Fairborn before they were selected as the, as the developer of choice to negotiate the deal. As you all know, and those who frequent the Streets of Brentwood, we've had some challenges. We have had a number of vacancies, and we've been trying to fill these vacancies, but really create a sense of place. And you, you heard from Olga talk about going to the Veranda and a number of folks in this community that are spending their money in Concord and in San Ramon. We are trying to change that. And as you've seen, just in this past January, when Barnes and Noble, they moved just a mile away from Zlatan Ranch to the Streets of Brentwood. I don't know who was there at the grand opening, but there were over 400 people trying to get in that store. And as you can see, if you've been going out to the streets over the past few months, more and more energy is forming between the Streets of Brentwood and now, and of course, Lone Tree Plaza where Home Depot is and Trader Joe's. That's the highest grossing retail center on the I-5, I-4 corridor from Pittsburgh to Brentwood. And Streets of Brentwood is catching up. We just celebrated, just a few weeks ago, the opening of Costco. There's more interest and more energy of retailers to come here to Brentwood. And what CenterCal is proposing here is not just to, to, to open three new buildings and add signage, but to create, and I've been, since I live in Walnut Creek, I've been to the Veranda. They're creating a place where family members can come and have entertainment and create this real sense of place that, the only place we do have this in Brentwood right now is downtown. So it will create another venue for folks in Brentwood, Antioch, Oakley, to come and spend their money rather than driving west on that floor. And with that, I'll take any questions you have with respect to economic development. But I'm very excited, and, and I want to thank Eric and his staff because for the past six months, we've been working closely with CenterCal to get to this point.
The speaker's time has expired.
He'd stay up there all night if you let him, just that's why.
I want to do one last check on Zoom. If anyone would like to speak regarding this item, please raise your hand now. We have no further speakers.
Thank you, April. I neglected to read before. The city has received one public comment regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments would be made available on the city's website on the meeting information page. And with that, I'll now close public comment. Is there any discussion on the commission?
So I just have, you know, I was looking at this in addition to the mocktails, which I find good. I like the mocktails. I could have sworn I saw Shake Shack on one of these things. There was definitely a Shake Shack. I just want to make sure. I, I thought I saw that. Anyway, I like the designs and what is being planned. The only question I have really is on the monument. What is the height of the monument signs? I mean, this one is 20. Is there any other height of monument signs throughout the city?
And you mean that approach that height?
Yeah.
I don't have that offhand. I do know that monument signs vary in height and location depending on the actual project. I don't think it's totally out of character with the scope of this project and, and the location. So that's why staff has recommended approval. But again, to your specific question, I don't have details on other monument signs throughout the city.
Well, besides the Shake Shack and the mocktails, I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. So I had an opportunity, obviously, to, to really look at the designs, look at the report. And in agreement with Commissioner Johnson, I, I like the, the designs. The signage piece that I wanted to have a, just a quick clarification on is what was the driving factor originally for the size of the signs? Like, you, we came to an agreement, I guess, back with the signs and how tall they could be. And obviously, we're now looking to amend that. What was the driving factor to keep it at the, at the current height?
Well, you're asking me to go back in, in time there. I don't, I don't recall specifically. The master sign program was originally approved in 2008, and that was with the original developer. That was a, a group called Continental Real Estate Companies out of Ohio. I don't recall the specifics in terms of what was envisioned at the time, but you can see by the number of times the sign program's been revised that just as things come up and as new ideas, you know, percolate, needs to be amended. So it's kind of a dynamic document, and this is what CenterCal is proposing to. And I, and I think they noticed this early on, obviously, and I've, I've noticed as well that, that one entry monument that's there now on San Creek, it's, it's very low profile. This would obviously change that quite a bit, but it's really important to CenterCal to sort of punctuate that entrance, entrance as much as possible.
God, you know, and I, and I agree with that. I mean, it's good to see an increase in the signage, just because I think the ones currently there, I don't, probably serve the, the justice that's needed to, to get the visibility. But what I would say is, I mean, again, I, I really like the new building designs. I had an opportunity to look at them in detail. I, I think they make sense. They, you know, they align with the rest of the buildings in accordance with the original approval. The flat roof approach with these buildings, I think, makes sense given the locations, because you want these buildings to blend in more, given where they're going to be built. Thank you to the applicant for talking about the shading. That is very, very, very much necessary and needed. I know many times when I've been out with my family, especially during the summer, it can be a quick trip because it's pretty hot. So I'm, I'm grateful, you know, for that. And I hope, you know, we, we see more, you know, canopies, covers, just to provide that much-needed shade. Regarding, I think, the environmental impact that you discussed, you know, I agree. I think there's no specifics or no evidence of site-specific environmental impacts beyond, you know, those that were already analyzed and mitigated by the mitigated negative declaration in the general plan environmental impact report. So, you know, essentially, you're developing on already-developed land. So I, I, I think, you know, there's, there's really not an issue there, and I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Going back to the signage and where I was going with that is, is, you know, I think the enhanced signage is needed. You know, the ones out there, I think, are too small, and I don't think they necessarily serve the purpose of attracting people to this location, and I, I think that will help mitigate that. You know, I, I think I would finish by saying that, look, you, you have a good track record of success with other locations. You know, I've heard residents, you know, a lot of people have talked about places like the Veranda in Concord, as well as other locations. So I'm in support of giving them, you know, the ability to make these enhancements and, you know, open the door for future business growth, which I think is really needed. And it will be very exciting as it moves forward. So I'm looking forward to seeing it happen. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brand.
Thank you. A lot to agree with what's been said here today. There's, I mean, it's a really stunning enhancement as Commissioner Jones described. It's a great word for it, in my opinion. I think it, as far as consistency goes, you know, the buildings and such that, let me look at it again. Very much aligned with what's the existing architecture that's there. I know we struggled with that on the La Quinta Hawthorne Suites because it was difficult to sort of emulate that. But because the height of these buildings is so low, I think it, slope of difficulty is a little bit easier to sort of accommodate those needs. I mean, I know there's typically a little bit of difference between renderings and actuals, but I mean, I, in terms, I know we all talk about the Veranda, but I know a few mentioned the Long Beach location and, you know, it's second in PCH. And I remember when that was basically a hole in the ground. It was a dumpy old hotel with a bunch of other undeveloped stuff that had been there forever. And then I came back 10 years later and it blew up. It's like, what is this? This is fantastic. So from an economic development standpoint, I mean, it's really, the work that you've done is pretty substantial. I know one area I'd like to comment on specifically is the the concentration of shade in the center portion is really stunning. And I have to applaud you because not only is it substantial, but it's a mixture of artificial and natural. You know, our city very much prides itself on the idea of introduction of trees and other local flora. And I think it's so important that we make sure to, you know, do that homage, especially in commercial spaces. And so, you know, I'm sure, I share the sentiment that Commissioner Jones does as far as, you know, taking our families out there and feeling like you're just, you know, somebody standing up in clouds with a magnifying glass. And it's like, you know, having substantial shade, well, I would imagine will substantially allow the, you know, will drive that kind of economic activity as well as participation there. So I look at these plans and it just makes me smile. I mean, really and truly. And I think, I think a lot of this could really make a wonderful addition to not only the streets, but our community as a whole. I think, let me just check here. I know we talked a lot about the sign. You know, I think our typical standard is something like eight feet in terms of maximum on the monument. Yeah. So I mean, 20 feet, but, you know, I didn't go out and measure it. Maybe I should have, but probably that'd be silly. But, you know, the entrance to downtown Brentwood, you know, our monument deal that goes up there, I would, near as makes no difference guess that it's about 20 feet, maybe, you know, probably under 25, but definitely in the 20-foot range. And that is extremely appropriate as a, as a passageway to, you know, proceed into our downtown region. And so I, you know, I would imagine that the 20-foot signs going into here, you know, on either side is a welcome addition to a facility of this nature. I know I speak with a lot of folks that don't live in our city as well and they often confuse the streets with being our downtown. There's, I think, a bit more branding, as I'm sure you're all familiar with, is like, I think that'll do, it'll do its service for sure. And then honestly, the use for these particular buildings, it's ticking all the right boxes as far as what Brentwood residents really need right now. And, you know, this mixed-use dining where it's, you know, a mix of casual, maybe some sit-down depending on what the, what tenants decide to join. I think this is a welcome alfresca dining experience, a lot of this stuff and, you know, shade to boot. But nonetheless, I see this as just a fantastic project and probably one of the better ones I've ever seen. And so I'm just very, very happy to be a part of this, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brand. Well, that's all going to be hard to follow. I took a different tack, you know, renders are always beautiful. And I wanted to see what this was all about. And I learned that CenterCal had done the Veranda, which I had never been to. It was kind of near my old stomping grounds in Concord. I used to work over there and I'd go to the Willows at lunch. So it's changed quite a bit. So my wife and I, we got in the car on Saturday. We went over there about, we were there about four o'clock in the afternoon and the place was just alive. There were people everywhere having a good time. They were making their day of it. The place was just beautiful. The landscaping, the sidewalks, the walkability of it, everything about it was pretty much what we aspire to here in Brentwood. And I just, I will say that as I was walking through there, the thought did run through my head is this is what we need to have in Brentwood. And then we did go back over to the streets as well because I like to do a site visit and, you know, test the circulation, drove around behind the theater instead of across in front of it to see how that was going to be. And of course, the filling in there is not part of our decision tonight, but I just wanted to get a feel for it. And looking at the designs and understanding where the buildings are going to go, I think that people are going to really just want to be there. The possibilities that have been put before us tonight, this is the kind of thing that is really going to wake things up. I think the citizens, the residents of Brentwood are mostly going to love it there. I think that it's going to draw a lot of people in from Antioch, Oakley, Discovery Bay, who will welcome having someplace closer by than Concord or Walnut Creek. I want to say about the signs in regards to that, I think the signage will help a lot by being larger, more obvious. We did drive by and look at the little sign out in front of the steakhouse and it was, it just doesn't catch the eye. And given that this is going to be a place now for, this would be a place now for people coming in from out of town to find, I just think the signage makes sense. The height of it is more compatible with what you're looking at as far as the height of the streetlights. When you're parked there, stopped at the light, you'll see it. It eliminates a lot of confusion and the extra signs on the inside to guide people around are pretty appropriate given that the streets is expanding. So yeah, I love it, actually. So that is all I really have to say. So with that, if there's no more discussion, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-009, approving an amendment to Design Review Number 07-002 and Design Review Number 07-015 for three new buildings in the Central Plaza area and an amendment to the Master Sign Program for new monument signs at the Streets of Brentwood.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Welcome to Brentwood. We'll now move into informational reports from committees and upcoming, in the upcoming meeting special schedule, sorry. Transplant Committee?
Haven't had a meeting, but we'll meet next Thursday.
I keep turning my mic off. Design Review Committee?
Oh, we have not had a meeting.
The lead committee has not met yet. We'll be doing that potentially the third Monday of this month. And Brentwood Municipal Code Review Committee?
I'm trying to get the new one scheduled. Haven't had it yet. Thank you.
Okay. And moving on to the request for future agenda items, do we have any future agenda item requests? Seeing none. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for April 15th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And will be held here at the Council Chambers located at 150 City Parkway. And we need one more motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.
What did I say? What did I say? What, I don't remember what I said. All right. A pool? Oh my God. March Madness Pool. The March Madness Pool.